My honor, yeah. Can we get all of our legislators to come to the dais, please?
He's here.
Yeah, he's here.
She told me finally. I didn't know what about his mentor you. It's Les.
I think Ashton's there. You can sit over by Jared and listen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to get started. We're just a couple of minutes behind, but we certainly want to respect your time and ours as well. So, I'm Gladys Robinson. I'm Senator for District 28 now in my fifth term, and I chair the delegation. So, I want to welcome you, but I'm going to allow all of our colleagues here to make an opening statement, and then we're going to get started. We're not going to take up all of your time, but I want to just say it is always our pleasure to come to Guilford County, Greensboro, and to speak with you about your concerns. Many of you we see all along, but the others of you, you have an opportunity tonight to ask questions or make comments. We're going to limit you to three minutes, and I think you're used to that. You know what bathrooms and all of that is because we have offices there to help guide you, but we certainly want to thank you for coming out this afternoon. And this is our annual Take It to Raleigh Town Hall meeting where we come to meet with you and to hear from you. So, I certainly want to thank you for all of your support and your faithfulness to the city of Greensboro and those of you who are in High Point, to Guilford County as well. So, I'm going to start, and we will go to the right since I have two here, and then we'll flip over and let each of our elected officials introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Amos Quick. First of all, I think we probably will introduce her as councilwoman. Also, first of all, Mayor.
There we go. My name is Amos Quick. I represent District 58 in the North Carolina House. Again, more formally, we probably will introduce her, but I want to honor the presence of our mayor and our city council and just say to you all that I am pleased to be a part of this great delegation that works well together on your behalf, and thank you for being here tonight.
Let's flip back over to Representative Faircloth. Introduce yourself, and then we'll come on over.
Yep, right there. You got it. I'm John Faircloth. I'm sorry I'm a few minutes late. I just came in from Raleigh. I'm a state representative for District, or is it State Representative for District 62. 62 is primarily High Point, but goes north all the way to the county line, so I've sort of got the western part of the county in my district. I'm in my fifth term now. I'm a native of Greensboro, but I've lived in High Point for the last many years and glad to be here tonight with a great team. So, we look forward to some good questions and answers. Thank you very much.
My name is Jerry Tillman, and I represent District 26, which is Randolph County and High Point. And I'm glad to be in Guilford County. My three children, one of them's here tonight, Pat Tillman, all live in Greensboro, all live in the same section in Starmount, and all my eight grandchildren live within three blocks of one another, so that's a good thing. And Senator Robinson, it's good to work with you and this whole delegation here, both sides, House and Senate. And Gladys, for the first time in my, this is my ninth term in the Senate, you moved to the right. You started on the right. I like you more already. Thank you, folks. Pleased to be here.
Well, good evening, and thank you to the community for coming out to talk to us tonight. My name is Michael Garrett. I represent you in the North Carolina Senate, District 27. It is the honor of my life to serve you and represent this community that my family calls home, and I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you tonight or in the future on what's on your mind and what's important to your family so that we can make sure that we continue making progress for Guilford County in North Carolina.
Good evening. I am Ashton Clemmons and very excited to be the North Carolina House Representative from District 57, which is north and northeast Greensboro. It's my first term in the legislature after serving as a teacher and principal and district administrator in our schools, and I am grateful to everyone up here who has helped me learn the ropes, and I feel like we've gotten some good things moving for our community in the time that we've been there, and I just echo what Senator Garrett said, that this is great. We're glad you're all here. We look forward to hearing from you, but all of our email and phone lines and office doors are open at any time. We really are striving to represent you, and that takes communication frequently, so please reach out anytime after tonight to follow up or new ideas. Thanks.
My name is Cecil Brockman. It's my honor and privilege to represent you in the North Carolina House. I represent District 60, which is High Point, Greensboro, and Jamestown. I'll just echo what everybody else has said. I look forward to hearing from you and working to make sure we can, make sure your voices are heard in Raleigh. Thank you.
Hey, Pricey Harrison, sorry, Pricey Harrison, representing the House District 61. I'm starting my eighth term in the legislature, and my district's changed a lot, and now it's sort of central-south Greensboro. And like everyone else here, it's been, it's been my honor and privilege to represent the citizens of Guilford County in the legislature, and thank you for coming out tonight.
So, I want to quickly move to introduce a couple of other people. Representing Representative John Hardest, who could not be here, is his assistant Sebastian King, his legislative assistant. Okay? And also Senator Rick Gunn had an engagement, could not be here. Want to formally recognize our mayor. Would you stand? Okay. Nancy Vaughn, and our city councilperson Sharon Hightower. Michelle Kennedy. Mary Kay Abuzeyda. I'll get her name right one day if the rest of you do. Goldie Wells. Okay. And did I miss any city council from Green, uh, city council in High Point is Monica Peters. Where are you, Monica? Okay. And from the Guilford County School Board, Jerry's son, Pat Tillman. He wouldn't let me forget him. Do we have any other elected officials here that I did not recognize? Oh, Pleasant Garden. How could I forget? My hometown. Pleasant Garden City Councilman Ronnie Surgen. Okay. So, now, we're going to get started. We thank each of you. You're going to have three minutes, and what we procedurally do is not answer you at that moment unless there's a burning answer we need to give, and if so, we'll ask only one person to do that so that we can move along and hear from all of you because it's your forum, and then, of course, we'll be able to respond to you later. So, I'm going to call those. I want to recognize Tim Marlin, who is legis, where are you, Tim? Legislative Assistant to Senator Garrett, who is taking role and taking all the requests this afternoon. Thank you so much, Tim. So, the first person for presenting this afternoon is Beverly Varner, and if, when you come up, if you'll give your, your name and your address, please.
I reside at 1718 Grove Street over in Glenwood. I am, I would like to speak to you about the approved, approved Medicaid expansion for the, for the Affordable Care Act. When Obamacare came out, I was so delighted that I would finally have health insurance, and then I found that my income level fell below what Obamacare would help me with my premiums. So, I checked with a private insurance company, and my payments would have been $379 with a $1,500 deductible. My income is just, would not even, I couldn't even, couldn't even think about doing that. So, I was told to go down and apply for Medicaid. So, I went to DSS, and I applied, and I was told that I did not qualify. I was not over 65, I'm not disabled, and I'm not blind. So, I, I do not have any health care, you know, and I, it's been really, really tough, you know, not going to the doctor when you need to. So, also, I'd like to speak to you too about, I have a dear friend who passed away a number of years ago, and she had a grown daughter who was developmentally disabled, and I try to advocate for her, this girl, you know, since her mom's died. I try to advocate for this girl all I can, and so I spoke with her care coordinator down at Sand Hills, and she said that there was an 11-year waiting list just for her to have, to get innovation waiver, and that is services that they can help the developments who delayed, like, it used to be called in-home skill building and, you know, supportive employment and personal care, you know, these, these things. She's 11 years, so she would be like 66 years old before she could get any services like that. So, and my third story is concerning my son, who was diagnosed with severe attention deficit disorder, language disorder, and several other diagnosis in the fifth grade. He struggled through school, and then they were, then he was in resource class, and then they told him that they were doing away with resource, and he would be mainstreamed into a regular classroom. It was such a struggle, and he dropped out at 16. He struggled with jobs, had a bad marriage, and was, had very bad teeth, and, and started self-medicating with alcohol and drugs with no insurance and no money to see a doctor. He got lucky and got into rehab two or three times, but only for four or five days. Anyway, he does not have health insurance, and, you know, our, our people who are self-medicating and have addictions are really falling through the cracks. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Vicki White Lawrence.
Thank you so much for having this town hall. I live, my name is Vicki White Lawrence. I live in Stokesdale, but I am here as president of the League of Women Voters of the Piedmont Our mental health system in North Carolina is broken and must be improved. It is unthinkable that police officers are expected to act as mental health professionals and that our jails have, in a way, become psychiatric facilities. The mental health system in this state requires vast improvement and immediate attention. We've had residents of our community die because of the inadequacies of this system. The League of Women Voters of the Piedmont Triad asks that our elected officials, our elected leaders and officials, that this issue, that this is an issue that must be prioritized in our state. A second issue I'd like to address is regarding House Bill 972, the body cam bill. And respectfully, Representative Faircloth, when this bill regarding police body camera footage was passed in 2016, issues with transparency and expectation of accountability were surely taken into account. However, what has happened is that viewing that footage is pretty much off limits unless there is a court order. The problem is that this contributes, contributes to mistrust and raises suspicion at a time when we all need to create ways to improve relationships between the public and the police. We encourage you to review this law and create a process for elected officials and the public to, to view the footage that promotes, and that this process promotes transparency and accountability when it doesn't compromise a case or the victim. Just on a side note, I would like to say that I was in Raleigh on Tuesday in support of the ERA, and I appreciate your support for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Surgen.
My name is Ron Surgen. My address is 6806 Russell Wood Court, Pleasant Garden. I understand the position you guys are in as elected official, and I'm also an elected official, been, been, been in that capacity in excess of 20 years, so I've seen a lot in those 20 years. But the real reason why I'm here is to speak on the behalf of Guilford County classified employees. We are, and I, I am a Guilford County classified employee, so, and we are not, first, I want to, I want to tag this, what I'm going to say, we're not against what's going, what's happening with the teachers' pay. We support that also, but what we do really support is our pay. We would like to see our pay, base pay adjust to $15 an hour. So, last year, there was a $15 an hour base pay for state employees. So, our classified employees are state employees also. We receive the same profit, 401K plan, the same insurance plan, health plan, and all other state benefits, but, but our pay, our pay don't, I don't guess our pay matters when it comes to classified employees' pay in Guilford County. But I appreciate, we didn't receive a 2% raise on last year, but if you look at the math, 2% of nothing is 2% of nothing, which is zero. You, you, you can't pay a bill. You can't pay a bill on that 2%. It's good to have it, but, you know, we are, we are vital to the system. So, what if, what if the classified employees, which is the support staff to the teachers, what if we didn't exist? The teachers wouldn't exist. You know, our bus drivers, what if our bus drivers didn't exist? Our students wouldn't, wouldn't be schooled. What if our custodians didn't exist? Our buildings would not be clean. Michelle Obama said a few, a few years ago, the best, the most important room in the schoolhouse is the cafeteria. I agree. I agree. So, what if, what if the cafeteria staff didn't exist? You, you know, so, that room, that room wouldn't exist. So, I said that to say this, the support staff that support our schools and our teachers, and I think we had, I think we had got an administrator, I forget, delayed on the end? The, yeah, okay, yeah. So, you, you know the importance of that classified staff, support staff. So, all I'm saying, legis, I mean, delegation, take it back to Raleigh. Please take it back to Raleigh, and let's make something happen with classified employees. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Gary Kenton is our next speaker.
Hi, Gary Kenton. Thank you for having this forum. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Immigration Policy Reform Roundtable of the League of Women Voters at the Piedmont Triad. We are putting on a program here on April 3rd, the title of which is "War on Immigrants: What's Going On?", and we don't use that title lightly. We think what is happening on the national level is, in fact, a war on immigrants, and looking at the outlines of proposed HB 135, we think we're afraid of that war coming to North Carolina. We are very concerned about what's already happening, the ICE raids on our immigrant communities, and worried about our relationships with law enforcement being eroded because of those raids and so on. But just, I don't believe any of you have sponsored HB 135 unless I'm mistaken, but I'll just quickly review the negative effects that bill would have. It would remove the right of law enforcement to use community or local ID. We have had a very nice ID program here sponsored by Faith Action that has helped police. When police see that ID, it removes a reason for them to have to arrest people and take them to jail. They can, people can be identified and don't have to be arrested. Once they're arrested, they become much more at risk. HB 135 would prohibit UNC institutions from safeguarding the status of their students. Would, the bill would force UNC institutions to disclose students' immigration status. The bill would require the Department of Public Safety to enter into 287G agreements with ICE. This would deputize state law enforcement to act as immigration agents. We see many sheriffs around the state moving gratefully in the opposite direction, but this bill would force their hand. The bill would force public schools to investigate whether outside entities they contract with are using e-Verify to check immigration status of its employees, and the bill would allow residents to file complaints against their city or county if they believe they are breaking state immigration laws. So, the Attorney General would be forced to allocate resources to investigate all complaints. This bill, it would fit very nicely into the Jim Crow era. We hope that's not where we're headed. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And, and let me just say that each legislator will have an opportunity at the very end to give closing comments, and they may want to include one or two points in their closing comments in response to some degree. If not, for those questions, we will get back to you. The next three speakers are Mary Kay Abuzeyda, Lydia McIntyre, and Brian Pierce. So, I'm assuming you'll have three each if you need that.
Thank you so much, Senator Robinson, and thank you, delegation, not only for putting on this town hall, but also for everything that you do for all of us every day in Raleigh when you were there making the, the really hard decisions. So, I want to thank each and every one of you. Yes, I'm Mary Kay Abuzeyda, and I am Greensboro City Council at large. I'm also chair of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, TAC. Beyond that, I am also a part of the Vision Zero Initiative in Greensboro. I, Officer Price, and Mrs. McIntyre from our Department of Transportation, we stand in solidarity, hoping that you will consider, should it go through all of the committees, the House pass, the passage of House Bill 144, the distracted driving bill. This new initiative is aimed at eliminating roadway-related crashes resulting in deaths and serious injuries. Vision Zero is taking one of the leads on this, and it's a very important initiative in the city of Greensboro. We stand to express support for House Bill 144, and I know that when it comes to you that you will do the same. Across the state, distracted driving is the cause of nearly one in five automobile crashes. It is second only to speeding as a cause of crashes on North Carolina highways and roads. This state is experiencing a steady increase in the rise of distracted driving, and we have had many fatalities in recent years. In 2012, there were 140 fatalities, and in 2017, it was 155, and it is increasing steadily. That's on top of the nearly 28,000 injuries from these crashes. Distracted driving is a serious highway problem in North Carolina. The city of Greensboro has also seen a spike in overall roadway fatalities in 2017 totaling 42. That is way too many for a city of our size. We have also had over 11,000 car crashes in the same year. Distracted driving is certainly a contributing factor to this. I would like to introduce Officer Brian from the Greensboro Police Department, who has been a longtime advocate for hands-free legislation, and I will allow him to share more statistics that point to the need for the passage of this act. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Officer Brian Price with the Greensboro Police Traffic Safety Unit. I've been a police officer with the city of Greensboro for a little over 25 years, assigned to the traffic safety unit for almost 18. I come to you tonight again standing in solidarity as a member of the Vision Zero Committee here in the city of Greensboro. There's a couple of things we wanted to address quickly and take up and be respectful of your time. First of all, I stand full support of House Bill 144. From the Greensboro Police Department's perspective, some of the things that we encounter on a daily basis is the distracting law that is in place in the state of North Carolina was passed in 2009, which clearly states that a driver while operating a motor vehicle on a street, highway, or in a parking lot did enter multiple letters or texts in that mobile device as a means of communicating with another person, or did read an email or text message on the device which was stored on it. That being said, that law's been in place since 2009. Let's fast forward to 2019. Look at the state of where cell phones were from 2009 to 2019. At the time when that law was passed, it was kept up with technology. This is like one of the type of situations where law has just not been able to keep up with technology. As law enforcement officers, our hands are really tied with enforcing that law because as the law states, if you are entering multiple letters or messages in a device, at that point in time, most people had flip phones. However, now the technology is these little five-ounce devices. However, now the technology is these little five-ounce devices can do everything you need it to do, by simply getting online, ordering things, and paying for them. If you're able to do that while operating a motor vehicle without violating the law, it completely ties our hands. We're unable to enforce these laws effectively just because of, it's this type of situation, we need an update in the law. That being said, we have seen a spike from the Virginia Technical Institute of Highway Safety. From 2009, there was reported 17% of every time a teen was involved in a motor vehicle crash, that teen was involved in distracted driving. Let's fast forward to 2014. Now it's become, after the recent study in 2014, nearly 53% of the time a teen is involved in a fatal crash is as a result of distracted driving. The law is not helping us, it's making it harder for us to enforce. So we're asking, standing in solidarity under Vision Zero, that you guys would strongly consider passing House Bill 144.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lydia McIntyre. I am a member of the Greensboro Department of Transportation. I serve as the Program Lead for Vision Zero Greensboro. Mary Kay Abuzweider, our councilperson as well, Officer Price have given you a little bit of background on Vision Zero Greensboro. And the aim is to reduce traffic or roadway-related fatalities and serious injuries. So certainly, the House Bill 144 goes along with our initiative to help support it. With this, we brought together several stakeholders over the last year. We actually kicked off in April of last year and brought together several stakeholders, including of course, the Department of Transportation, public health, police. We've engaged advocacy groups as well as local businesses, including like someone like Promley Roberts in Volvo have worked with. We have over 50 people who have engaged with us and have been working with us throughout the year, and their main focus right now is the development of an action plan. And that action plan will lay out our implementation steps to reach towards getting towards zero, which is a lofty goal, but it is a process. And during that action plan, of course, you identify your issues, and one of the main emphasis areas is speed and driver's alertness. And with that, we can imagine, you've already heard the statistics about this distracted driving, and we know that that contributes to it. And one of the main strategies that we've identified is to explore enforcement of stricter distraction laws for motorists and non-motorists. And even in that effort and along those lines, last year we did a combination of outreach to the public to gauge their support for it in this area. And we surveyed over, almost close to over 900 people, and we asked them, how do you feel about banning cellphone usage while you're driving? We had 775 to respond to that question, and we saw 71% support for that from those surveys that we did. Therefore, we want to express our support for the Hands-Free NC Act, and we thank you for your time and consideration. And your support of the bill will assist the city of Greensboro and the state towards reducing roadway-related deaths and serious injuries. And I'll leave some information with you. We do have a sticker that we are promoting, and it says, "Phone down, slow down," and click it. So these are the things that contribute, we found from looking at our data, which mirrors very likely the state data too. So we'll just leave this with you all, and we hope you will support us by displaying this on your vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, all three. And Officer Price, I want to say, we are so pleased to have our officer stand up to offer preventive kinds of techniques to keep our community safe. So we really thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Moska. Is that correct? If not, correct me when you get up there.
One of the few who do it right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Moska, and I represent the Guilford County Council on Aging. Our commission is tasked to advocate on behalf of older Americans of Guilford County and to specifically allocate home and community care block grant funding to various service contractors. Since 2010, our commission, in conjunction with the regional AAA staff, have noticed some striking changes in the use, demand, and pricing of providing services through the HCCBG program. Let me give you three examples. Senior Resources of Guilford County is the funded provider of Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals. Over the years, Senior Resources has had to steadily raise more private funding, so that today, Senior Resources needs to raise more than 30% of the cost of providing nutritional services because of the declining HCCBG funds and other sources that they depend on. There, in eight years, Senior Resources has increased services for Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals to the elderly by 121%. But the increase in the waiting list for these years has gone from 0 in 2010 to 336 as of 2018. Despite their best efforts, they cannot meet the demand. Another example is cost shifting of transportation service from HCCBG funding to the county and to other sources of transportation. Funded transportation services have declined by 45% in this time period. These two examples demonstrate that the system is maximizing efficiency and stretching outside resources to the limit, while access is increasingly limited to a few. Another example, between 2010 and 2018, the number of at-risk seniors has increased, that we have served here in Guilford County, increased by 260%, and those at high risk have increased to more than 400%. And finally, let me explain that there are cap services for the past 13 years for adult day health and adult day care services. This is constricting access, this is constricting and offering limited access to those served. During this 10-year time period, in 2010, there were 53 people served by adult healthcare Only five of those were at risk. In 2018, they served 58. 58 out of the 58 were at high risk or risk services. I need to ask you to do something. We need more funding, we need you to drop the caps for the adult daycare services, and we need for you to prepare this state for the transition needed to meet the demographics of the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bob Cleveland.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Bob Cleveland. I'm an aging program planner with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council Area Agency on Aging, and our organization covers 12 counties in the Piedmont Triad region. As far as the area agency, one of our responsibilities is making sure there are programs and services in the communities for older adults and for caregivers. And so to illustrate that, I want to tell a story about the impact of these services. And actually, it's not our story. It came through Triad Healthcare Network, which is an accountable care organization. If you've heard this story, I apologize, but it's important and it begs to be told. There's an older woman who had four chronic conditions, heart condition, COPD, diabetes, and another condition. And in one year, this woman made 130 trips to the ER. Again, this is a true story. The group of doctors, after that year, sent a nurse case manager out to the home. Nurse case manager found out there was no electricity in the home. Even if she had electricity, she did not have a working refrigerator, and, which also meant what? She couldn't keep cold. Her insulin. So every couple of days, literally, she's going into diabetic crash and coma. They ship her off to the ER, they fix her up, and where do they send her? Right back home into that same environment with nothing else changed. She ended up right back there 130 times. So the doctors actually pooled their own money together. They got her lights turned back on, bought her a brand-new fridge stocked with the food. They sent the nurse case manager in to do some education with her. And in that next year, guess how many ER visits she had? Zero. Not one visit. The point is that the doctors, what the doctors did was nothing medical. She didn't need anything medical. She needed the community-based supports that would have prevented all that medical care. And we're talking, the doctors probably paid, what, a couple thousand dollars for all those things together, when it saved over probably a couple hundred thousand dollars in cost to Medicaid because of those ER visits. The difference is huge. So our organization helps fund the block grant services that Dan mentioned, home and community care that provides Meals on Wheels, transportation, in-home aid, adult daycare, and a host of other services that allow for those community-based supports. Hopefully, you know that North Carolina is transitioning to Medicaid-managed care, and North Carolina is the first state in the country that has put forward that we will pay for, out of Medicaid funding, things like transportation, nutrition, housing, and interpersonal violence services. So we in the Piedmont are looking to become one of the four, two to four regional pilots that will be chosen. We've already begun convening efforts, and we would certainly appreciate anything that you could do to help support bringing that pilot to the Piedmont Triad region. It includes counties of Guilford, Forsyth, and Rockingham Counties, and they're talking in investment over five years of $650 million. That is a huge economic opportunity that we cannot afford to miss out on. So increase funding for the block grant and help us obtain a pilot here, right here in the Piedmont. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Donna Nelson.
Hi. Hi. I'm here to talk to you about smart meters. I don't think they're so smart. I've done quite a bit of research on them. I knew they were coming for about the last five years. So I'll just read this to you. Duke Energy's smart meters are harvesting data of our in-home activities 24/7. Duke Energy will be selling this information to third parties without our consent, according to the Department of Energy. Their PDF released on October 5th, 2010, admits the release of energy consumption data can cause harm to residential customers and those who have proprietary business information. Duke Energy's profits will exceed the value of electricity itself through the sales of private energy consumption data. That's surveillance, otherwise known as wiretapping and is illegal. This is a goldmine for criminals. The surveillance agenda is being launched in the name of climate action. The media promotes this corruption and marginalizes dissenters. Most are unaware and overwhelmed when they learn of these insidious facts about smart meters. The attrition-based process by Duke Energy leaves customers with no choice but to agree to smart meter installation because they will not let you keep your analog meter if you want to opt out. Duke Energy has never disclosed to its customers that these meters are emitting dangerous levels of electromagnetic radiation way above your cellphone. The level of exposures causes biological death of cells in our bodies, and this information is extensively documented. Duke Energy will kindly extort a one-time fee of $150 for an opt-out meter that is still a smart meter but non-communicating, and an extra $1175 a month because now they send someone physically to read it. This could be avoided by allowing customers the ability to keep their 100% safe analog meters. These fees were approved by the North Carolina Utilities Commission, who are supposed to protect consumers. Medical opt-outs are free but not a remedy. Opt-outs were created to shut the ones up who are raising awareness and only provide protection against datamiting and radiation, but not fires. The Achilles' heel for utilities and government is the liability associated with the smart meters. Smart meters are stupid idea. Duke Energy of the Carolinas must be put on notice of liability for illegal surveillance, selling us a product that causes serious health concerns and fires. There is a growing body of evidence by experts and researchers and whistleblowers to prove it. Already, other states have pending legislation against smart meters. In Stockton, California, someone hit a pole causing a power surge of 800 homes. The smart meters blew off of their homes. I left some documentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Saul Rodriguez.
I believe they're on the list as well, after me. So hello, everyone. My name is Saul Rodriguez. First, I wanted to take this time to thank you all for being here today. I have met some of you in the past regarding the issue that I'm here to discuss today, which is tuition equity. As a member of the community, one of the most important issues that I believe the community wants addressed is that every year qualified students continue to graduate from one of the North Carolina public high schools with the inability to attend college simply over an unjust barrier preventing them from getting in-state tuition. A lot of these students have lived in North Carolina most of their lives and have excelled in their classes with dreams to obtain a college education and continue living in North Carolina. As of 2016, nearly 30,000 students residing in North Carolina applied for DACA. That's 30,000 students either struggling to pay out-of-state tuition or simply not continuing their education with only tuition stopping them. These students are not asking for free tuition, which is a common misconception, because they work hard to get scholarships. But an undocumented student or undocumented student looking to attend NC State University as I want strength of attending would have to pay $25,000 out-of-state tuition instead of the $8,500 in-state tuition rate. Now, passing legislation that grants these students tuition equity does not just benefit these students. According to a study conducted by Roger Williams University's Latino Policy Institute, states that allow undocumented immigrants to pay in-state tuition have witnessed a 31% increase in college-going rate and a 14% decline in high school dropouts. Therefore, these students have had an increase in their workforce while also increasing people paying higher taxes since these students would have the ability to obtain higher-paying jobs. As of now, 20 different states currently have policies allowing undocumented students to pay in-state tuition rates. It is long overdue for North Carolina to do the same and create equity. Lastly, I would like to mention that I have been in this movement for six years now, and you all have met, some of you have met me when I was in freshman year in high school. Have begun, I began to advocate for tuition equity when I was a freshman in high school because while all my friends were focused on getting their driver's license, driver's permit, or any other high school-related events, I was left to worry about what my future would look like, knowing that public school was not an option for me. I graduated from the middle college at UNCG as valedictorian with a 4.9 GPA. And since my freshman year of high school, I have worked with local organizations to help undocumented and documented students strive towards higher education. And it pains me that every year we see many students graduating with no further plans of attending college only because of this barrier. Graduation season is right around the corner, and I hope to see some sort of policy change. And I've left some information for you all. I don't know if you've all received that, but I left a couple flyers.
Thank you, thank you. And I may kind of mess up names. Is that Dolce Lopez Alvarez?
Good evening. My name is Dolce Lopez Alvarez.
Dolce, okay, correct me.
I live in 5402 Kenan Drive, but that's in Brown Summit. However, I have previously lived in Greensboro for most of my life. So today, I'm also here to talk a little bit about tuition equity. I have been advocating for this issue since I was in middle school. I'm currently a junior in high school, and I've seen a lot of students struggle to get into college and even any like scholarships that will help them actually pay. I come from a mixed-status family, and my oldest sister, unfortunately, she wasn't able to go to college because she didn't have any funds or anything that would help her pay for it. My other sister, who is standing right next to me, her name is Carla, she chose not to go to college, but she has been helping with this issue by advocating with me since I was younger. And I, however, do want to go to college. This year, I will be applying to colleges, looking for them, looking for scholarships, anything that will help me. As a DACA recipient, I do not qualify for any in-state tuition, so that means I'd have to pay out-of-state tuition. I've known this since I was in middle school, and this has caused me to work harder every single day when I'm at school. I currently go to their early college at Guilford, and I have been working to raise my GPA so that I can get scholarships that'll help me fulfill my dreams, which are to go to college and get a better life. I'm hoping that you guys will be able to help me and help support this issue because it doesn't just affect a few students, it affects hundreds of students, especially here in North Carolina. Thank you for your time, and please help us any way that you can would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Carla Lopez Alvarez. Carla Lopez Alvarez.
Hi, my name is Carla Lopez Alvarez and I reside in 5402 Kenan Drive, along with my sister, which is Brown Summit. But as she said, we previously lived in Greensboro for a good time of our lives and I graduated 2018. I decided not to go to college, but that doesn't mean that I don't want to see other students have a better life and go to college. I know a lot of my friends, I have watched them go through the process and I've seen people who are close to me who have not been able to go to college just because they can't afford it because of their situation. I'm grateful and blessed to be able to be part of DACA and have DACA. And I know that helps me, but I know there are other students who did not have that or are not, who have not had the opportunity to apply. I would, please, I would just ask you guys to help us in any way that you can, help support any bills that will come by to help promote in-state tuition and help other students. I want to be the voice for students who are afraid to speak up, even though I don't want to go to college and that's something that I did not choose to pursue. If I do want to pursue it later, I want to be able to have that option, just like many of my friends have it right now, that aren't going to college. I'm in the same boat. I've been, I went through Guilford County my whole life. I went to three different elementary schools. I went to Jesse Warren, I went to B.D. Forick, I went to Rankin, and I went to Brown Summit Middle School. And I went to Page High School and I was part of the IB program. Sadly, I did not graduate, but I did transfer back to my home school, which was Northeast, and it lit me up in a way that I didn't think was possible and it helped me become a better person and want to be a part of my community even more. And I helped out a lot there because I became stuck and I became in this state where I was like, I'm not going to have help and I'm not going to want to do anything. I became really depressed, but I have been fighting this battle with my sister since my freshman year of high school and I have not seen any changes. And I just ask you guys to please hear us out and help us as much as you can. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous, but thank you so much for your time and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm not sure I have your sheet up here, but come on up and introduce yourself.
Well, good night. My name is Maria Mayorga and I am here, like the rest of my partners, to speak on behalf of in-state tuition. Every year, the state of North Carolina spends about $10,000 per student from kindergarten all the way until 12 senior year. So let's do the math. This is an investment we are doing in our community, especially in our youth, who are supposed to be the future and the present of our work and everything else we do with our lives. That investment, however, stops by the time they start college because the state of North Carolina is missing out on thousands of dollars in revenue as well as the talent. A lot of these students, like my partner have mentioned, do not qualify for in-state tuition. So they either have to go out of the state and invest those dollars there or end that talent as well, or another country that will accept them just as they come. This battle is no longer about being one better than the other, but about humanity. Therefore, I am here to ask you guys to look into supporting and sponsoring a bill that will look this ideal, that will support this ideal. Because like I said, it's not about who is better, but it's about a moral issue, right and wrong. And we believe this is the right thing to do for all of you as our elected officials. And keep in mind that we have done our part as individuals involved in the movement. We count and we have done our work in advocating and getting the support of the community at large, such as organizations, public and private, businesses, and much more. Like Saul said, a lot of us meet with you guys every year to talk about bills like this and any other issues. In this case, I also want to bring up the issue that Gary Canton brought up earlier in regards to HB 135. Like he said, we believe that none of you are sponsoring this bill, but I do know that a couple of you are sitting in some of the committees, such as the Rules and Operations. I will personally be reaching out to your offices to talk more about HB 135, HB 244, and HB 63. I want you all to know that Latinx immigrant and that immigrant community as large oppose all of these three bills because they will harm our community in ways that we more than can think of. We did this again two years ago and we are ready to fight again, but we ask for you to stand with us so that not, so that every two years we don't have to keep coming back and asking for mercy. So I ask you to please consider sponsoring a bill that will favor in-state tuition and opposing all those three bills that are on your agendas. If any of you are interested in follow-up, you can let me know, but I will be in contact myself directly with your offices. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And before you, before you, would you repeat those bills that you mentioned? And also, when you complete, would you complete one of these forms with your address and also we'll have your information down, please?
I will do that. And so it's HB 135, HB 244, and HB 63. And I can, 63, yes. Very harmful anti-immigrant mails. They mirrors the ones from 2017, so they should be new, so we're not surprised to see them, but we don't want to keep seeing them either. I will fill that form and I'll reach out to you guys.
Thank you so much.
I'll make it quick, Senator Robinson. I just want to say something as a newcomer. To sit here and listen to kids who have done everything that we as parents would expect, to work hard and play by the rules just to have the same opportunity as everyone else, to have to listen to them come and ask the state to give them the same opportunity as our own children is heartbreaking and embarrassing. And I hope that the members of this delegation can work across the aisle to come up with a solution.
Our next speaker is Ken Orms.
Good evening and thank you for holding this event. My wife and I moved to High Point with a Greensboro mailing address. I'll be in three years in May. We moved from a suburb of Chicago. And a couple of things are absolutely astounding to us. One is the two-thirds bond procedure, which if I understand it correctly, allows government entities to borrow X amount of dollars and when they have paid two-thirds of that back to get another bond to use up that two-thirds again. I believe that's how it works and I think it's an outrageous way to keep taxpayers and debtors prison because governmental agencies are never going to stop spending money. If they have an opportunity to spend two-thirds more money or get another bond without seeking voter approval, they're going to do it every time. So my suggestion would be that if you want to continue this practice to get the next two-thirds, it should be approved by a referendum of the taxpayers of that community because otherwise people will never get out of date. The city of High Point, and I'm glad to see Councilperson Peters is here tonight, the city of High Point spent $70 million on a baseball stadium without seeking voter approval. They changed their term limits from two years to four years without seeking voter approval. They spent $15 million on a new police station, although it may be needed, they spent the money without voter approval. They spent $1.2 million on property that the city officials in High Point say, you know, the land is there, we might as well buy it, we have no idea what we're going to do with it, but we might as well buy it. And that's just insane. So if we're going to continue the practice of the two-thirds bonds, it should be after voters approve the next two-thirds, not just let government officials spend recklessly. The voter ID law that was recently, Judge Byron Collins said, is not valid because it was created by illegally constituted general assembly. So if the general assembly was illegally constituted, then every bill, every spending bill, everything you've done since 2016 because you were illegally constituted because of gerrymandered districts, then everything that you have done, every dime you have spent, you have spent illegally because you don't have the legal authority because you're either elected in gerrymandered districts. And this one judge says that you're illegally constituted. So I think that needs to be addressed and I'd like to know what the state is going to do about that. Are they going to fight it? And as a taxpayer, if you've been spending my money without being legally constituted, then all that money should be paid back, every single dime of it. And the last thing I'll say very quickly, I am 100% in favor of legal immigration. I am 100% opposed to illegal immigration. And if House Bill 35 requires that police arrest criminals, I'm all in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Allen.
Hey. My name is Ashley Allen and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Think Baby statewide project, the Guilford County Early Childhood Workforce Collaborative, as a parent, an early childhood worker advocate and citizen of Guilford County. And I want to share a concern that impacts every person in our county and state. As of January 2019, there are approximately 23,686 children under the age of six living in Guilford County where one or more adults are working. The need for childcare is critical to the economic stability of these families, but we know that these settings provide more than just childcare. These settings are building Guilford County's future brains. We talk about kindergarten readiness and third grade reading levels, but these outcomes actually begin in early childhood settings before children ever enter the school system. And it's crucial to have supporting caregivers with an understanding of how to support development during this time. Currently, one college course is the minimum educational requirement to be considered a lead teacher in these settings. And the average wage for an infant and toddler teacher in our region is $9.18 per hour, which not surprisingly explains why one in three of these teachers report leaving the field in the next three years. Turnover in these settings is high and we are unable to attract, retain, and engage well-educated early childhood teachers in our county, which impacts our ability to deliver on the promise of what research shows a quality setting and most importantly, a quality teacher can provide. Programs lack the resources and funding to do more and the gap between tuition, which is already high, and the true cost of quality, which could support well-educated teachers to stay in a classroom, is where I hope you will focus. By promoting and supporting policies at the state level that support the early childhood workforce to earn a wage where they no longer have to choose whether to pay a power bill for themselves or their families, or having food on the table, we're choosing to support the brain building of our future citizens in Guilford County that could potentially be sitting where you all sit tonight. And there's an event next week, some of you are participating in already and know about, and I want to say thank you for that. But for others, I'm going to leave some information as well because we do have some elected officials that are going to be job shadowing in early childhood classrooms over the next week or so. But it's going to be followed by a press conference and community dialogue, Guilford Child Development, on May 14th at 10:30 a.m., where we hope to talk more as a community because we rely on you to push these policies and support them at the state level, but also talk about what we can do as citizens in Guilford County to support the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to recognize High Point City Councilperson Victor Jones. Okay. Thank you for coming. Our next speaker is Martha Schaefer.
Hi, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come speak with you tonight. I'm Martha Schaefer. I'm a resident of Summerfield. I'm here tonight as a constituent and as a concerned citizen who has over a decade of experience working in a hospital in Guilford County. My family, my husband, my sister, my nephew, all have decades of experience in healthcare in Guilford County. So you'll understand why I am here to ask you to support efforts to close the health insurance coverage gap in North Carolina. Thirty-seven other states, including those controlled by Republicans, have taken the step of expanding Medicaid coverage and it's time that North Carolina joined them. As you know, there are about a half a million people in North Carolina who can't afford health insurance but don't currently qualify for Medicaid, just like Beverly, who spoke to you first tonight. Closing the gap is the right thing to do, both morally and financially. It would provide our neighbors access to life-saving care and it would bring tens of thousands of jobs, billions in business revenue, and would help address the opioid crisis. Real people are suffering and dying needlessly and you can do something about that. Please don't turn your eyes away from these citizens. Just say okay to the federal government. Accept those federal tax dollars that we're contributing to, bring those back to North Carolina to take care of our own people. The weight of knowing that you have denied care to our neighbors and you've denied them dignity and that thousands of people have died as a result, that would not be a burden that I would want to carry. Phil Berger's excuses for not implementing Medicaid expansion are wearing very thin for me. He talks about not wanting to give away services to able-bodied people. Well, Phil, we know they're able-bodied because 67% of them are working, but they're unfortunate to be in low-wage jobs that don't provide benefits. They work in the restaurant and food industry, in construction, and in grocery stores. Others are providing care for sick or disabled family members. Please take this message back to your fellow legislators that Guilford County, do we want to be, North Carolina, to be known as one of the last states to accept Medicaid expansion? That's not a superlative we should be aiming to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvonne Sutton. And I'm going to call the other names so you can line up. We have several more. Sharon Hightower, Walter Salinger.
Greetings, everybody. I'm Yvonne Sutton from Greensboro, North Carolina, and I have four different items I want to bring to you that has already been before you. One of them is the insurance and the Medicaid expansion. Let's look into that. I'm one of those. I work for Guilford County Schools. I'm a part-time, I'm a permanent part-time employee and I cannot get any insurance benefits, you know, and I tried and it was going to be more than my paycheck, you know. Then I didn't qualify for Obamacare because I didn't make enough money, you know. So there's a little gap in there and we do need that Medicaid expansion. And the next one I want to bring up is raise the school nutrition services wages. And we, we're in Guilford County and we want to raise the wages for the cafeteria employees, classified employees for Guilford County. Even though the North Carolina Association of Education, we're trying to do it for all classified employees. But some people don't understand, we get paid from a different pot of money than the state employees do. So we want that looked into and we want a livable wage, you know. Maybe I could afford some insurance and give me some real glasses, you know, so I wouldn't have to wear these and these, you know, because we don't have affordable insurance. And I say affordable, you know, because they told me, when I did apply for insurance, they called me back saying, "Miss Sutton, this insurance is more than your paycheck", you know. And we're going to have to terminate it, you know. So I tried, you know. So we want to work on that and then look at raising the wages for the classified employees because we are funded from the federal government and from the child nutrition department. But we want ways that, everybody talking about y'all getting a line item for us. But we want ways that everybody talking about y'all getting a line item for us, you know. But we know what can happen with that line item, you know. So we want funds so we can get better wages for school nutrition workers. And then the third one I have is police enforcement. And someone mentioned about the camcorders and getting a judge order just to get a chance to look at the camcorders. I experienced something with High Point Police a while ago where my son had gotten a ticket there. He said, "Ma, I asked the judge, the judge, where the DA said I can look at the recording." And we went to the police department, looked at the recording. And as a parent, I almost fainted at what had happened over a temporary tag that had faded. And the police officers went to the door and was jerking the door open. And it was over 40 minutes later before they even looked at the tags on the car. You know, as a parent and Black Lives Do Matter, that hurt me because he could have made one wrong move and he could have been gone, you know. So some issues need to be taken care of with those camcorders in reviewing the footage. And the last one I want to say about was distracted driving, you know. And I think that's HB 144. Let's look at them bills also because we can be distracted. And those big old computers in those police cars are very distracting too. Let's be transparent, you know, about everything that we do. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon Hightower.
Good evening, Guilford delegation. Thank you all so much. I'm Sharon Hightower. I reside at Six Bills Court, Greensboro. And I certainly appreciate you all being here tonight. It's certainly heartfelt, warming to know that you all care enough to come and sit down and have conversations and hear from our community. And I've enjoyed the interaction we've had over the last few weeks. I'm just here to personally thank you for supporting Senate Bill 110. I'm here to speak, it is the tornado, $1 million, to help those that have suffered devastation during the tornado that came about. We're almost one year anniversary, April 15 of 2018. And even though it seems like a small amount of money, it is really going to help tremendously for an area that sees the highest poverty rates, that has an average minimum yearly income of $21,000 versus the city's average of $42,000. To rebuild our community will be rough. And so these dollars will be very critical in helping to reconstruct homes, rehab homes, and rebuild new homes in our community. And I know it will improve many lives. So I want to thank you very much, I mean, because it is so critical we do this. I mean, even today as we speak, people still need their homes repaired. Just this very morning, I stopped at a home with the blue tarp still on it from the tornado and she said she needed a roof still. FEMA turned her down and she could not afford an SBA loan. So people are still trying to recover and come back. And these dollars will help just do that in our community to make sure that everybody has a good quality of life. Yeah, I could use a little bit more money, but I am most appreciative for those dollars that you all have decided to help us with. And hopefully, as you talk to your other colleagues in Raleigh, you will express those concerns that we have. When we sat down and talked with Senator Robinson back in September of 2018, we told her and showed her the statistics and the data of the homes that were damaged, the amount of money that was damaged for those homes. But we've done all the rehousing of people and gotten them to safety. Now we just want to be able to rebuild and restart anew and revitalize the community of East Greensboro. So I personally just want to thank Senator Robinson, Senator Tillman, for co-sponsoring the Senate bill and Representative Quick and his other housemates for the House bill as well. And thank you for everything else that you'll do to help support the city of Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Salinger.
My name is Walter Salinger and I live in Greensboro. And I just want to say I'm here because I think, and as I think you are here, because we all believe in democracy. But the sad thing is that in our country, the faith in democracy is dying. While it's true that people born in the 1940s like me, almost all of them believe that democracy, living in a country that's governed by democracy is absolutely essential, only 30% of the people born in the 80s in the United States believe that it's essential to live in a democracy. What's happened between then and now that's resulted in this massive loss of faith? And what kind of a future does our civic life have for it? I don't know how this happened, but I have a strong suspicion that the pattern of chronically dishonest elections that are accomplished by gerrymandering is what's responsible. Gerrymandering is a process that creates dishonest elections by permitting politicians to choose their voters. It's a racket to protect incumbents and to institutionalize the process of stealing elections, where a majority of legislators are elected by a minority of voters routinely. Please fix this. There are bills before the House now with sponsors, co-sponsors, that are, I think, a House majority in both cases. This House Bill 69 and House Bill 140, both of which are aimed at remediating this problem. Please support it or them and make whatever amendments you think to make the bills more effective, but don't delay. I note in closing that it's a tremendous pleasure for me to see the friendly cooperative bipartisan attitude in this delegation. I've lived here for 40-plus years and I haven't seen anything like this before. I kind of suspect it's because finally the courts forced the dishonest General Assembly elections into an honest state by forcing a proper, un-gerrymandered redistricting process. Because when politicians can't choose their voters, they got to pay attention to the voters that are going to be choosing them. In the meantime, keep it up. Comedy is a good thing for government. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Claudia Lang, Peter Borkin, and let's see, Alvo Cremarti, or Chip.
Good evening and thank you for having us. We appreciate it. My name is Claudia Lang and I live in Greensboro. And the reason I'm here tonight is my biggest concern is the environmental destruction in North Carolina. Our agencies need more funding to combat the assaults that our air and our water face from all sides. As a homeowner in Greensboro, where PFOA, PFOS, and related compounds which are similar to Gen X were recently discovered in our water, and a homeowner in Stokes County near the still-active Ballouse Creek steam station at which coal ash remains in an unlined pond, I'm incredibly concerned about water quality. I hope you will protect the health of your constituents and hold known polluters like Duke Energy and Kimore's Company accountable by voting for strong environmental regulations and protections. At this time, what you can do to help, you can do to help our environment is to oppose the cap in place that Duke Energy has proposed for some of the still-active steam stations. These pits don't need to be capped in place. They need to be dug up and not left in unlined ponds where they can continue to pollute our water or wait for the next epic rainfall or hurricane for them to continue to seep into our water supply. I hope that you will show your support for dry lined pits and are against cap in place, oppose cap in place. And I say this to you as someone who does not have children of my own, but I am concerned about our future. When I hear these young people, Senator Tillman, you mentioned your grandchildren, I'm concerned about our future. When the environment is poisoned, nothing else matters. Education, Medicaid expansion, none of that matters when you're fighting for basic needs like food and water and air. Thank you. Oh, I'll say one more thing. As a pharmacist of approximately, going on 30 years, I am also very much in favor of Medicaid expansion from some of the things that I've seen. So please again, oppose cap in place and expand Medicaid. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Borkin.
Hello, I'm Peter Boykin from Greensboro, District 58. On November 6, 2018, there were many constitutional amendments that we, the people, voted on, including the amendment to require voters to provide photo identification before voting in person. In my opinion, this was the single most important amendment that North Carolina citizens voted on. The election results showed that the majority of North Carolina citizens voted for voter ID. Requiring voters to prove their identity by providing a photo ID when voting is simply a measure to ensure that people aren't misrepresenting themselves when voting. Sadly, there is a continuing argument over if voter ID is needed for security versus the opponents who claim voter suppression and the myth of racism as related to voting. There are 30 states that have voter ID laws. Now please, I ask you all, how do you, help me understand how a photo ID is racist? Do opponents of this law think and want me to think that people of color aren't smart enough to get a photo ID? Everyone of any color has a photo ID for many purposes. So let me ask you. You need an ID to go to the hospital, to cash a check, sometimes a credit card, to get a food stamps over welfare, buy a lottery ticket, pick up drugs at a drugstore to get a night club, to purchase alcohol and cigarettes, and to get a job. How is that racist? I myself, I hate racism. But to water down the term racism and attach it to voter IDs laws is an injustice and serves the movement to end racism no justice. So honestly, in this age of NC legislator and government stressing over gerrymandering and so-called voter fraud in elections, would it not make sense to at least secure our votes with a valid voter ID identification system? We, the people, deserve a fair, honest, and secure election system. Voter ID is key to this. Everyone needs an ID and everyone has a way and time to get one. If you can do all these things I mentioned with an ID, then you seriously should have one to vote with. I refuse as a citizen of the great state of North Carolina to let one single judge think his personal partisan opinion and decision is going to negate the will of the people who have spoken and want this amendment. Furthermore, one judge cannot justify calling this vote void due to the so-called gerrymandering, voting districts. Because the catch is that held true, the great work of both sides of the political fence in the last few years would be all found null and void. And this would do more harm than good for the state. So I urge as a representative, as the citizens of North Carolina who voted yes on voter ID, that we listen to the will of the people and we put voter ID to our Constitution with great haste. Thank you.
Thank you. Chip Cremarti.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Chip Cremarti. I live at 6410 Woodmont Road in Jamestown, North Carolina. I want to talk to you today about access to care for frail older adults with chronic conditions and their family caregivers. The reality is the vast majority of care for adults, older adults with chronic conditions is provided at home by a family member not in a long-term care facility. And we know that these family caregivers are at risk for physical, emotional, and economic stressors. We know that they're also twice as likely to die prematurely as their non-caregiving peers. Well, we know we can do something about that. We can provide them with a break from their caregiving duties and education. And this is why we offer Adult Day Services. Adult Day Services can provide these caregivers with a reduction in stress. They can give them hope. And they can give their loved ones a safe place to go with RN-level services, nutritious lunch and afternoon snacks, as well as activities and fitness classes. But the reality is Adult Day Centers in our state are closing. We had a hive of about 125 Adult Day Centers and now we're down to 81. The same is true in Guilford County. We've seen centers that have closed over time. And this is very concerning to me because there are no more affordable care options in our community than Adult Day Centers. The challenge has been our stagnant reimbursement rates. We've been receiving the same reimbursement rates for 13 years. Now, as you can imagine, costs rise over the years. Employees would like to be paid more. We've heard it tonight. Health insurance costs rise, food's costs rise. We raise money. Other day centers in our state raise money, but the gap has just gotten too large. Day centers are closing. We ask that you treat Adult Day Centers through Home and Community Care Block Grant the same as the other 18 services that can be paid for and remove our maximum cap. Currently, we're capped at $33.07 a day for Adult Day Care and capped at $40 a day for Adult Day Health through Home and Community Care Block Grant services. This will allow our local planning bodies, just like the other services, to help determine what the rate should be on a local level based on quality, based on hours of service, and based on the regional pay structures. So again, I ask you to help us remove these maximum caps for Home and Community Care Block Grant, for Adult Day Care and Day Health, and help our Adult Day Centers thrive so the older adults that are at home can help and get care and remain there for as long as they would like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last three speakers are Kevin Ortiz, Yuba Aranda, I'm messing up the last name, Sandero, and Victoria Allred.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kevin Ortiz. And I have lived in Greensboro, North Carolina since August of 2018. I just moved to the area just recently from the state of Florida and I'm a DACA recipient. And I've come here to show support and echo the demands and requests of the high school graduates from North Carolina to support in-state equity. When, I graduated from high school in Florida in 2008. And because DACA didn't exist and in-state tuition didn't exist, I also had my dream deferred. It was until 2014, after DACA passed and in-state tuition passed in the state of Florida, that I was able to go back to college, get paid out of my own pocket for my associate's degree and then transfer to UCF and graduate with my finance degree. I have moved to North Carolina to pursue my dream to make the world a better place by providing leadership development at high schools, colleges, and universities through the BBNT Leadership Institute philanthropic effort. So I'm here to ask again that you support the dreams of these individuals, these high school graduates from North Carolina, to go to college. Because I am the living embodiment of what DACA can happen. In-state tuition passed in the state of Florida and now I live in this state. I'm a taxpayer. I filed my taxes, paid my state taxes for the first time in North Carolina a few months ago. I feel very proud of that. And I want to make sure that as a taxpayer in this state and a new resident, I am listened to and heard. And we continue to make time and effort to support the dreams of every high school graduate in this state, regardless of their immigration status. Because it's not just about DACA recipients. It's about every high school student in this state given the same opportunity to continue to live in this state, go to college, and make a better living for themselves and their families, as well as their communities. It worked in the state of Florida. It will work in North Carolina. And I mean, it's already indirectly working in North Carolina, if you ask me, since I'm living in this state. So thank you very much and I hope to see your support in the future.
Thank you. Yuba Aranda, and you pronounce your last name.
Yuba Aranda Sandoval. I live at 1202 Quell Drive, Greensboro. I moved here about two, I'm sorry, three years ago. I moved here about two, I'm sorry, three years ago, and I come from Randolph County. I grew up in Randolph County. That is my home. That's where my family still lives. I am also a former undocumented, then documented. I married a U.S. citizen who was able to adjust my status. And that was the time where I attended UNCG and finally graduated because I transferred from RCC to UNCG and finally graduated with my bachelor's. I too come to ask for your support for in-state tuition. Having been through all of those stages has made me realize how fortunate I am and how I need to stand up for my peers because they are our growing young professionals. Let me tell you that again. Our young professionals, those are our future, as well as your children. They are worth the investment. I was worth the investment. Kevin, Saul, Carla, Dulce, Maria were worth the investment that our state put into us, North Carolina. I've grown here, so please, I urge you to support an in-state tuition equity bill that will help these students to further their education, to become those young professional and productive community members that we need. So I urge you to please support in-state tuition. I also want you to know that there is a false line of this line, getting in line. Our ICE raids here in North Carolina are affecting our families, our children. Our children are being affected, and the long-term effects that will have on our children are devastating, mental, emotional, and physical. Let me remind you that some of the issues that have come up here are health care. And if we do not take care of these issues right now, they will become long-term health care effects on our U.S. citizens and as taxpayers we're going to have to face earlier, I mean, earlier or later. But it's better to do it now when we can support these children by stopping these ICE raids and helping them to find this line to a comprehensive immigration reform. My dad has been waiting for over 20 years to adjust his status. Again, there is no line. I am a U.S. citizen. I am unable to adjust his status, but his brother may be able to. So I please urge you to please educate yourselves on the immigration laws. There is no such thing as a line, and the lines that are coming from the White House are just instilling fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Allred.
Have to adjust this mic a little bit. Hi, my name's Victoria Allred, and I live in Wootsitt. I wanted to ask you to support the College Athlete Protections Bill. Recently, a study commission was formed, and recommendations will be proposed soon by the Senate. I believe that athlete rights are the silver rights of our generation. Imagine if Zion Williams, who was hurt a few weeks ago, imagine if that injury had ended his career. Is he truly getting an education that would prepare him for a competitive and evolving economy? No. I have loved the fight for athletes to have a quality education and representation if coaching abuse occurs. Why do we see the tragic stories of the gymnast abuse from Michigan State? What about the Maryland football player who died from a heat stroke? Because there's no oversight from the NCAA. Did you know if a football player like the one in Maryland died at UNC or any other state school today and their family sued the athletic department, it'll be coming out of taxpayers' dollars? The athletic department does not pay for that lawsuit. Yes, your taxpayer dollars will be paying this family for what they have suffered. This bill could save, I just ensured that. Each of you is subjected to ethics standards enforced by the State Elections Board. I simply ask that the NCAA system have oversight. I ask for your support of athletes like me who suffered coaching abuse that resulted in chronic lower back pain. Additionally, because of my coaching abuse, I could not play the sport that I loved in college anymore because I complained about my injury. My coach constantly told me I was faking my injury, that I did not want to be there, and ultimately, he kicked me off the team because of my injury. My family, over my lifetime, will pay $2 million because of what my coach did and because athletic department did not take the time to actually look into my injury. I tore a ligament in my lower back, and as many people know, that is a very hard injury to deal with. I can only stand for so long, I can only sit for so long, and now I can't play the sport that I love because my coach forced me to play. So I just ask you, please, vote for this bill and pass this because it will be the first one of its kind. Maryland is right now doing a similar commission like we had in the state, but you can set a precedent to the NCAA of how their student athletes should be treated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your tolerance. We are a little over, but we do want to take a few minutes to allow each of our legislators here to give a couple of minutes of final comments if you're willing to hear them. And those of you who are not able to ask questions, if you'll write those down and pass them in to us so we can get that. So I'm going to start with Representative Harrison.
Thank you, and I really appreciate everyone coming tonight. I wanted to respond to some of the points that were raised, and I'll start with the last one, Ms. Allred. The bill passed out of Judiciary Assembly Committee unanimously this week. I think it's in rules on Monday, so it's moving through the House pretty quickly, and it appears to have unanimous support. So I'm sorry it won't help you, but it will help future athletes. So thank you for raising that issue. Environment, PFOA, we've got legislation we're drafting, both in the House and the Senate, bipartisan legislation that should help with that problem here in Greensboro and across the state. COLAS, we've got legislation that we're drafting that will require excavation of all those sites, whether they're low-risk or not. Just basically, I think most of us feel quite strongly that Medicaid expansion is something that needs to happen, must happen, and should happen. In North Carolina, it just makes all kinds of sense on so many levels, and we'll continue to fight for that and independent redistricting because if you can't get fair maps, you don't have fair representation, and you don't have a representative democracy. So we've got to fix that. That just has to be a priority. The tuition equity bill, I've been filing that every year since I got elected in 2005, '06. It has not moved, but we're going to continue to push for that and hopefully build bipartisan support because that's the right thing to do. I'm sorry, it looks like most of the students have left, but it just, it makes all kinds of sense. So I'm really horrified by some of the anti-immigrant bills that have been filed. They don't reflect North Carolina values, and I hope they stay in the Rules Committee. So I'm not going to take everybody's time to respond to everything else. I'm maybe smart meters. I'm aware of that issue, the radiation issue, related to that, and coming up with the 5G cell system that we're looking at too. So thank you all, and if you want to get in touch with me, just let me know. I can respond more specifically to the other questions raised. Thank you.
I also want to thank everybody for coming here. I'll just respond to a few of the comments. The first, Medicaid expansion, like Representative Harrison said, that's an absolute no-brainer. And if we're being completely honest, we should have expanded Medicaid nine years ago. 500,000 North Carolinians in North Carolina would have Medicaid if we expanded Medicaid. It's been reported that we would have 40,000 jobs created with Medicaid expansion. 17,000 folks here in Guilford County would be covered under Medicaid expansion. And the truth is, every single person in this room, our premiums are up because folks don't have health care. And the gentleman who was talking about the number of hospital visits that the young lady had to deal with, that's part of the reason people are going to the hospital instead of having a primary care physician. And that is a crucial issue here in North Carolina, one that we, I'm hopeful that we can solve with the dynamics of this General Assembly being changed. I'll go to education because I'm on the Education Committee. I think it's something that everybody cares about. We've got a fund, public education, way better than we do. We're 37th in the state in teacher spending. We're 39th in per-people spending, and we're a top 10 state when you talk about population. So it absolutely makes zero sense that we're not spending nearly enough money that we should be on education. I was very proud to see the governor's budget that had a 9.1 raise for teachers over the next two years. I'm very encouraged by that, and I'm also very much encouraged by what we're doing tonight. I'm not going to take too much of you guys' time. I really do appreciate all of my colleagues here today, and we're, I think Guilford County is really special with our delegation because we actually talk to each other and we try to work together on bills that we're working on in Raleigh. And so, and I think just in general, with the dynamics changing that Raleigh, we're talking to each other a lot more, and so that's only good for the folks in North Carolina. And I appreciate everybody, again, for being here. Thank you.
So I echo the appreciation for you all being here. I hope that you will continue to lift your voices because the voices that matter most in Raleigh are the people living in our state, and so you have got to continue to lift your voices. You all brought up issues that pose questions about what we value as a state. Do we value children? And if we do, we would be investing in early childhood because we know it is fundamentally the most important time to invest in our children. 85% of their brains are grown by the age of three, and I look forward to being in a preschool, pre-K classroom tomorrow with Think Babies. Do we value our children who were brought here at innocent ages where they had no decision-making power and are the future of 4.9 GPA at one of our most competitive high schools? And we've chosen to not continue to un-glass and let him live his fullest life to benefit all of us here in our state? Do we value hard work? Or should people have jobs where they're working 40 hours a week and still cannot provide for their families or put gas in their car? And especially when those jobs are as precious as carrying our children and providing their food for them? Do we value health and the opportunity for folks to be healthy, both mental health, Medicaid expansion, which we are choosing to not provide health care by continuing to not expand Medicaid? And do we value the health of folks who have lived their whole lives and are asking to age with dignity? Finally, do we value democracy, both voter protection and gerrymandering, and whether we ought to have a democracy where debate, compromise, that's how we should be operating? So I say that to say, a lot of you brought up topics, but I was listening for the fundamental questions that we have to ask. And as Cecil said, Representative Brockman said, our job is to have those hard conversations and to figure out how we move our state forward. And I will always be grateful that I get to have a seat at that table and feel ultimately responsible to take your voices to the table. So thank you.
First of all, I'll just second everything that has been said, and I'll be brief. And those that know me know that's a challenge. But I do want to thank everyone who did come and speak to us this evening, and those of you that didn't get a chance, please do send us an email, write us a letter, send us a fax for those that still use that kind of technology. You know, one of the things, this truly is an honor of my life to be able to represent you in the North Carolina Senate. And one of the things that has been so surprising, since this is my first time holding elected office, is, like Walter mentioned earlier tonight, the bipartisan effort among this delegation that is new, and it is refreshing, and it gives me hope. It gives me hope that we can tackle some of this state's greatest challenges. It gives me hope that we can accomplish Medicaid expansion because here in Guilford County, that is, 17,000 people will have access to health care. It's 3,000 jobs created for Guilford County, and it's a $1.9 billion economic impact to Guilford County. It makes sense, not only as the right thing to do, the ethical thing to do, the right decision for health policy, it's also smart economic policy. And it gives me hope that we can start correcting the course on public education in this state because our teachers commit to educating our children, our most precious resource. And the fact that they are paid at 37th out of 50 states should embarrass each and every one of us. And it gives me hope that maybe, maybe, we can finally end partisan gerrymandering by establishing a nonpartisan redistricting commission. And I hope that many of the challenges and the concerns that you all raised tonight will be addressed, probably not in this session, because this is my legislative tie, and you can't see it, but it's turtles because the General Assembly moves slow. But I hope that over the next few sessions and in the coming years, we can continue the effort of bipartisanship and working together to solve the problems. Because I do believe, and I believe this from the bottom of my heart, we all want the same things for our state and for our kids. We may differ on how we get there, but if we keep talking and we keep reaching across the aisle, we can make progress for each and every one of us. Thank you.
You're moving on to me, Senator Robinson. Thank you, folks, very much. I'm only as good a senator as I am with information I get from Randolph County and Guilford County. When I hear from you folks, I take notes. I've got four pages of notes here on things I need to check on. Anytime you want to talk to me, if you want to call me at home, and you want to call me in Raleigh, do so. You want to email me, I will get back to you. I hear from many people. Now, tonight, I've heard issues that involve the state, that involve Guilford County, it involved the school system, and some of them federal issues. We only have control of those state issues. When you talk about classified employee pay, that has a lot to do with what we do across the board. But then your local school system, cafeteria workers are paid out of a different fund. That's an enterprise fund where you take in the dollars and you put it in a fund and you pay your folks. And those salaries are set by the school system. We don't tell Guilford County what to pay a cafeteria worker. We do give them certain state dollars, and then they have a lot of local dollars they put into it. But heard many issues tonight, and I won't delve into them because sake of time, we're running behind time. So just let me know if you have issues. Contact me, I will get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you again, as everyone else is here, for being here tonight, and thank you for allowing me to represent you in some form for 15 years, 12 years on the Board of Education. This is my third year in the North Carolina State House. I'll start with education because that's where I cut my teeth, and I've heard several of the comments tonight that are regarding education. As a member of the school board, we fought for, and even during the Great Recession, we did everything that we could to keep up with pay, and we never differentiated between teacher pay and classified pay as important. We viewed both the same. Mr. Surgeon, some of the things you said were our mantra during the time. The kids can't get to school, the kids can't eat, they're not going to learn, and teachers can't be effective. Also, to Councilwoman Abuzerwey, Officer Price, and Ms. McIntyre, I am really in favor of House Bill 144. I have co-sponsored it. I was checking, one of the things I wanted to say, I was not distracted listening, I was checking to see if I had co-sponsored that bill. I did co-sponsor House Bill 144, and I have a personal experience being a distracted driver and running to the back of someone, not much damage a few years ago, so I know personally how important that is. For those who spoke about tuition equity, again, as a member of the Guilford County Board of Education, we sent a resolution to Raleigh that supported tuition equity. It is absolutely heartbreaking that a student who earned a 4.9 GPA has had to determine that he can't afford to go to college. And as Representative Clement says, the whole state misses out on that. For those... For those talking about gerrymandering and those things, I certainly have in my time in the legislature supported a bipartisan efforts to have a redistricting commission. The voter ID law, I did want to speak to that. One of the cautions that we tried to present even when the amendments were on the ballot was that you are asking a question without enabling legislation. The question was, should voters present IDs to vote in North Carolina? The voter said yes. The enabling legislation has been the holdup. What constitutes an acceptable ID? Colleges and universities are now in a conundrum because some of their IDs may not be acceptable. It was the yield, it was the warning that we were trying to bring up in the legislature that we should yield on this until we had the enabling legislation. So, to ask someone, should people have an ID and the voter say yes, and now you come back and say there are some IDs we're not going to accept. Our colleges and universities, our students use those IDs to enter into their buildings, to eat lunch and dinner and breakfast, to access libraries and materials at the college and it also, if we don't accept college IDs, you create another barrier. So, you're using North Carolina ANT, for example, as a polling place, but you won't accept student IDs, so now the students have to leave their campus to go get an ID, to come back to their campus to vote. That's what voter ID and the voter ID amendment, those things were important and we tried to bring those up. The last thing that I'll say is certainly a livable wage is important in North Carolina and I certainly support that and look forward to working again with this great delegation. I will say this, we do have a great bipartisan effort that happens in Guilford County. Some legislators have reported, they don't even talk to the other side of the aisle. That doesn't happen in Guilford County and I thank you all for electing and supporting people who are willing to talk together. And to my City Council Representative, Ms. Hightower, thank you for the commendation on that. We're going to continue to try to push through because we know East Greensboro is still hurting.
I've been attending meetings like this for a long time. Senator, you have as well.
Since Moses walked the earth.
That's right. And I'll have to say that this is the, one of the best I've ever been to because everything that was brought up here and talked about was important and was highly up on the measure for any citizen who's thinking about their society. So, I want to congratulate you as a group and your fellow citizens for coming up and talking to us. I want you to also know that we meet with a lot of people in our offices back in Raleigh. All of us have a steady stream of folks coming in and they don't come in saying, I live in High Point, I want to talk to you. There are some that do. They come in and say, I'm from North Carolina and I want to talk to you because all of us represent the entire state of North Carolina and how we vote and how we argue our points has an impact on the entire state. I think one of my proudest things I saw tonight was that uniform of that police officer sitting over there. In 1961, I put on my first Greensboro police officer uniform. It was blue and it was a lot uglier than the one you have now, but I walked these streets with walking beat and that started my career all those many years ago and I've been in public service since then. I want you to know that we've made note of the things you've said here tonight and we're going, be going back and each of us will sort of take a check mark to see where we stand on this list you gave us. I'm glad to hear people support getting those phones in a safe place in the car because I worked hard on that and I had a lot of pushback, but, and it's not passed yet. I think it will, I think it will. I think we've come to that point. And I heard a lot of people say what my colleague here said, I had an experience when I reached for my phone and I ran into the car in front of me. It happens a lot. We, we heard some things here that you're concerned about that we already have in the hopper, already at work and in most every case, this is true in the House, I can't speak for the Senate, but in our House bills and if it's a, a problem for our area, our county here, you'll find multiple names from both sides of the aisle on those bills and that's sort of unusual. We haven't seen that in a long time, but it's going to make things better. It's going to be better when we can sit down and, and talk about matters. And we also have a change this time in that we, on our side of the aisle, have to sit down with a governor who's not of our party. It may not be the most comfortable thing in the world, but it makes for better government. So, we're working hard for you and thank you so much for coming in tonight and you know where to reach us. Thanks a lot.
So, ladies and gentlemen, I want to echo what I've heard and thank our delegation. I want to thank them first for electing me chair, but also for their support from both sides of the aisle. I told them I wouldn't chair, wouldn't chair unless we could all work together and we have been doing that as you can see with some of the bills, so we want to thank you. I want to thank the Greensboro City Council for allowing us to meet here. And just a couple of housekeeping things. These questions, you sign forms, we're going to share them with every member here so they'll have an opportunity to respond to you or to contact you as well. And I know they made their own notes, but it'll help if they have a copy of this, so we're going to do that with everybody. And also to tell you that we're currently starting the budget process. I think we have a couple of budget co-chairs up here, but we're starting that the governor sent his and we're starting that in the legislature, which will go for some time. So, you have an opportunity to continue to submit your concerns and your requests here. If you want to contact us, you know how to get us, but it's North Carolina General Assembly or ncga.gov. You can go on your computers and get our emails. And I know Senator Tillman is anxious to get out of here, but hold on, we're going to let you go. But he has been, he's been a good colleague, he's been a good colleague and Senator, hard to keep him at bay, but I want to thank you for your tolerance, your support. Thank you, Tim, again, for taking all of these and thank all of you. Feel free to contact us at any time. Good evening.[1750.83][1750.83]